Jerry?
He's standing already.
Good, how you doing? We got a new member joining us today, John Snyder.
Yeah, I got the note yesterday. Thank you.
Hello, John.
Bobby can be as obnoxious as you want to be. You're signed in under Patrick McKay's name.
I know, I don't know what happened here. Let me try to get out of this.
I can rename you.
Hey, maybe it's a good idea. How's that?
Mister Kirk.
That's the techie that I am, huh?
Mister. I guess you gotta get it somehow.
They don't call me that around here.
Well, John, welcome on board.
Thank you.
Hopefully, at some point in the world, things will get a little bit back to normal. We can actually have meetings.
Yeah, we can actually get together face to face, huh?
Yeah, that would be nice. This is convenient when you travel, but it's not the best way to conduct this.
No. But we do what we can, right?
Yeah, exactly. Making the best. I can make fun of Raquel, she can't throw anything at me.
Funny.
I just wanted to make sure you were still awake there. Okay, I've got seven o'clock. This agenda hopefully shouldn't be too taxing, but there are a number of items, so we'll go through it. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll, and as a reminder, Mr. Kirk, when you announce that you're present, you need to state where you're participating on the phone call from.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Mister Dallow? Mister Dallow? Mister Dallow?
Would appear that he's absent.
Okay, absent. Miss Gonzalez?
Here, Shelby Township.
Mister Meredith?
Here, Shelby Township.
Mister Turner?
Here, Shelby Township.
Mister Oppone?
Here, Shelby Township.
Mister Garrett?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Mister Chairman? We have a quorum. Raquel Moore is present in Shelby Township.
And I'm also participating from Shelby Township.
We have one more, John Snyder. John hasn't been called.
Oh, he's now a member? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Mister Snyder?
I'm here in Shelby Township.
Okay, thank you. Mister Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First item is approve of the agenda.
So moved.
Support by Turner, support by Garrett, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item is approve of the minutes from January 11th.
Some move.
Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so this evening, as I mentioned, we have five items. Maybe I didn't mention the number, but we have five. First, site plan number 20-26, Joseph Lawson, regarding Consumers Energy Regulator Station on 23 Mile Road. Is the petitioner, see if he's present. If I could get just a review of your name, address, what it is you're proposing and the reasons for it, please.
Sure. My name's Joe Lawson, here on behalf of Consumers Energy. Our address is 1 Energy Plaza, Jackson, Michigan, 49201. The application before the commission this evening is for the, basically the rebuild of an existing gas city gate facility there on Van Dyke near 23 Mile Road. Essentially, what we're looking to do is to rebuild the existing facility, like I said. It's, I think this facility is close to 30 years old. It's time for a refit, so we're looking to upgrade the facility, replace the existing material and equipment. And then by doing so, we're making improvements to the overall look of the facility as well. We're proposing to, there's a regulation building that's on site right now that will be removed, and a new facility that will be, we're proposing it's half-brick, half-metal-sided facility that will be replacing that, as well as replacing the chain link fence that currently parallels the street. We're proposing to reinstall a vinyl-coated chain link that will look obviously better than the typical silver chain link fence. And then we will also replace the valves and whatnot within the facility. When we replace these facilities at this point in time, we also upgrade the valves, like I said, to a remote-operated valve, so we don't have to have necessarily people on site to operate those valves. We go ahead and can do that remotely with these new valves that we install as part of these upgrades for these facilities. We have received the review comments from the staff planner. We have no issues with anything that's noted in there. We will be upgrading the landscaping as well, adding some buffer to the north, some along the street side, and just a little bit on the south side of the facility as well.
Okay.
If there's anything I can answer for you folks, I'd be happy to do so.
Great. Julie, do you want to give your review, please?
Sure. We did a preliminary review on this, so most of the items have been taken care of. I know that they will require a variance for the fence. They're limited to six feet, and the plan's proposed seven feet. And also barbed wire fencing is prohibited. So like I said, I largely don't have a problem with this. They upgraded the structure to include brick on the going halfway up and then metal to the top. So, and they're also relocating it to the rear portion of the site. So, like I said, I don't have a problem with it. I know that they don't want to do an extensive amount of landscaping only because they prefer that the site be visible from the road in case there's any issues there. But we've been working with Consumers Power for the last couple of years. They've been upgrading their gas lines all the way from 25 Mile and all the way down through the township in 23. So this is one, a part of that upgrade process.
Okay, thank you. To the board, are there any questions for the petitioner or for the planner?
Chairman?
Mister Turner?
Question for Mister Lawson. How often are these buildings maintained by Consumers Energy?
Generally, we have staff that will show up probably once a week. No one is manned or works out of this facility weekly or whatnot. Basically, it's just visited once a week to make sure that everything's operating as necessary, and that's usually about it.
I was asking, yeah, I was asking more or less the maintenance of it because when you look at what's currently there, it has the metal siding, and the roof is rusting, and the sides don't look so great. So I was just curious, how often are they maintained? And a follow-up question would be, would Consumers Energy be open to making that building completely brick instead of the brick and the metal?
That would be something I'd have to run up the flagpole, to be honest. It's the full brick. We usually don't want to do full brick. We're more than willing to give the half-brick just for the aesthetic purposes. These buildings are specifically constructed for this purpose. This isn't something you can go to Home Depot and buy. So we try to keep them as close to, normally they're all steel. We don't put any brick on these as a standard. But we understand, in order to make these fit into a neighborhood, or you know, to be a little more aesthetically pleasing, we do add some brick to them. But in terms of maintenance, this is obviously one that needs to be replaced, and that's part of the reason why we're doing it. But with the new materials that we use, the paint that's on them will not flake off like these old facilities that we have. We also use colors that are more natural tone. We use, you know, obviously, brick, and then it's a tan and brown, steel, the metal. So it doesn't quite stand out as much as the old lime green, or not lime green, but the lighter color green that the old facility was.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chairman. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mister Chairman?
Mister Garrett?
Just a quick question, so I have better understanding what's going on. What is happening over there at the, with the natural gas regulator? What exactly is going on?
So what occurs at these facilities is we bring gas in off the high-pressure gas mains, and this regulator station reduces the gas pressure so we can put it out to the distribution system that feeds the homes and businesses in the immediate area. So that's what this basically does, is just depressurizes or lowers the pressure of the gas in the lines.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman?
Mister Turner?
I'll move to approve site plan number 20-26, Joseph Lawson, for Consumers Energy parcel number 23-07-16-476-003, located on the west side of Van Dyke, north of 23 Mile Road.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Turner, support by Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yeah.
Mister Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, good luck. Next item, site plan number two.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mister Kirk.
We should state the location and any roll call votes.
Really?
That's the word I get.
No.
Yeah.
No. Why would you need, why would you need to do that? We've already, you know, we've announced, and we haven't adjourned the meeting. No one's left or entered the meeting. I mean, I guess we haven't gotten up and moved to another community during that three minutes of the meeting. All right. All right, how much trouble can they put me in? I'm a volunteer. All right, if you choose to announce where you live, you're welcome to do that. I will, you know, I will not stand in your way. I will pause to allow for it, but in the age of the civil disobedience, all right.
Mister Chairman, I'm still in Shelby.
Okay, good. I'm glad you can rest easy now, Mister Oppone, and the rest of the community can rest easy knowing where you are.
Nobody left.
And I'll leave it at that. All right, site plan number 20-32, Joseph Youngblood. Julie, are you doing this one?
The engineer is online, so he can give a quick presentation, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, thank you.
Jason?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. My name is Jason Arlo. I'm with Anderson, Exton, and Westrick. 51301 Shaner Road, Shelby Township. We've been working with Mister Youngblood and the Parks and Rec Department on a new pavilion behind their current activity center, which is located at 14975 21 Mile Road. So just behind the activity center, the Parks and Rec would like to build a open-air pavilion, basically. And the pavilion is roughly 50 feet by 21 feet. It has a shingled roof. It's all constructed, the posts would be constructed out of metal, but the metal posts would be wrapped in a, I guess I'll call it like a Fippon casing, like a white or colored casing that will conceal the metal. And then on the bottom of the posts, we have a cast stone cap with stone veneer at the bottom of the columns, and then a concrete essentially floor on the bottom. So it's pretty simple little building, just to provide some shelter and picnic area in the back for some of Joe's activities in the back of his new building there. So if you have any questions or comments, I'm here to answer whatever I can for you. Thank you.
Although, I'm pretty sure it's not Joe's building. I think it's the township's building, right?
Correct, yeah.
Actually, it's Mister Garrett's building.
It's the old Shelby's building, yes.
Do you have any pictures?
Do I have any pictures?
Yeah.
No, I do not have any pictures. No, we just have the, I have the drawings, the plans I can show you if you'd like to see the elevation on the plans.
No, that's okay. I thought maybe you got some renderings to show us how beautiful this is gonna be.
We did not do any renderings, but I assure you, it will be beautiful, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chair?
Ms. Moore?
I move to approve site plan 20-32, Joseph Youngblood, Shelby Township Activity Center, 14975 21 Mile Road, parcel number 23-07-25-400-015, located on the north side of 21 Mile Road, west of Hayes Road. Shelby Township Activity Center Pavilion, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all site plan review comments.
Support.
Second.
Then moved by Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrett?
Yes, in Shelby Township.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes, Shelby.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes, Shelby.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. Okay. Next item is, and we saw this, I believe, in December, Tony Gallo for Town Center Villas. Mister Gallo?
Good evening, Tony Gallo. Good evening, Tony Gallo, 6303 26 Mile Road in Washington Township, on behalf of the petitioner. Good evening.
Good evening. So what's changed from last we spoke?
So we've updated the elevations, and we have eliminated the extra building. We went back to the original site plan. We're able to get a 60 additional parking spaces, and we will be making enhancements to the existing park that's there with pavilions and play area, things of that sort. And we would ask for this body's approval this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, great. I want to thank you for your attention to the feedback that we gave you. And I think what you submitted, the elevations are very nice. It'll be very nice to clean up the balance of that development, and we look forward to your continued involvement in Shelby Township, so I'll be supporting.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chair?
Ms. Moore?
I move to approve the proposed elevation and site plan modification as presented by Gallo Companies for the Shelby Town Center Development.
Second.
Support.
I'm sorry, who was the, who got the second before Anthony?
I was.
Mister, no, I think it's Mister Garrett. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none?
Mister Chairman, I want to thank Mister Gallo for taking our advice and beautifying this. This is a lot better plan than the last one, and thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you for your time and assistance as well to each of you. We will do a good job, by the way. I'll tell you that for sure. I don't think anyone has any doubts on that. Commissioner Moore?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Garrett?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yeah, Shelby Township.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes, Shelby Township.
And the chairman votes yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck, gentlemen. Next item, site plan extension for Shelby Creek Senior Living Facility. Is the petitioner here, or Julie, are you gonna?
I'm here too, Julie, in case you have any questions.
Go ahead, Simon.
Hi, Simon Morrow, 48657 Hayes Road in Shelby Township, Michigan, regarding an extension of site plan that was approved previously, I believe it was sometime in '18. We've been working diligently to get this final engineering approval. We've been working, so we started out with Fazal Khan. We were very close in getting a site plan approval, but when you went through the transition with AEW, seemed like they restarted all over again and re-reviewing all the engineering drawings that we had done. Nowak and Frost is our engineer that's doing the design work, and it's just been tedious and putting it together. But we're almost there. We have our water and sewer permits now, finally. We have a permit from the county. There's floodplains on the property. We're able to get a floodplain map revision from FEMA, and we have the EGO permit, so we're really close in finalizing this and getting it started. And we're asking for an extension because I believe our site plan approval had run out. If you have any questions for the project, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Is this the first extension for this submission?
Yes, it is, Jerry.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I've got no issues. Julie, why don't you give us your comments?
Yeah, actually, I agree with Mister Morrow. I think there was some site characteristics there that probably took a little bit of longer for engineering on this site. So I don't have any problem with that extension on this site plan.
And the COVID delays as well, we were shut down. Everybody was shut down for a while, too. That did not help the situation.
Sure, sure, sure. To the board, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman?
Mister Turner?
I'll move to extend the site plan number 18-28 SLU6 for the Shelby Creek Senior Housing, located on the west side of Van Dyke, south north of 24 Mile Road, parcel number 23-07-09-426-002, for a period of one year, starting on February 21, 2021, and to expire on February 21, 2022.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Oppone. Any questions on this motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Mister Oppone?
Yeah.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Mister Garrett?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Mister Meredith?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes, Shelby Township.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, final item is site plan number 17-43.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah, good luck. Site plan number 17-43, special land use number 11, Cambria Hotel. And this is an amendment to the site plan. Is the petitioner a representative here?
This is Joe Kirdana, 2145 Crooks Road, Troy, Michigan, 48084. We've come before the board tonight with an application to build a storage garage on our property at Cambria Hotel for the purposes of storing some of our holiday decorations, patio furniture, things like that. We're currently having to use an off-site storage facility for that stuff, and we do have some room there that's at the very back of the property and concealed from the road, and also just off the expressway ramp. It's my understanding that we were able to fit the building on the site in a way where we comply with all of the site standards and the zoning ordinances, so we're simply looking to get an amendment or an approval for this to be added to the site plan.
Okay. Julie, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. Chairman Moffett, the building elevations, the location meets all the required ordinances. It's a nice elevation. It complements the current hotel, and like I said, it meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, so no issues here.
Yeah, that was the only question that I had, was are you comfortable with the elevation that it does? The problem is when we piecemeal this stuff, sometimes it gets away from us. It's hard to tell on a black and white sort of two-dimensional drawing exactly what it looks like, but if you're comfortable, that it all fits, I'm fine with me. Anyone with a question for the petitioner or the planner?
Mister Chairman, a quick question. Trying to look at the plans here. Is that building attached or detached?
It's detached, Mister Garrett.
Detached, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman?
Mister Oppone?
Move to approve the proposed modification to site plan number 17-43, Cambria Hotel, 50741 Corporate Drive, parcel number 07-23-151-05, located south of 23 Mile Road, east of M53 Freeway. Addition to accessory building, subject to submission of revised site plan addressing all site plan review comments.
Support.
I'm sorry, I missed this. Who supported that?
I did. We did.
Mister Meredith? Okay, any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Oppone?
Yeah.
Mister Meredith?
Yes, Shelby.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrett?
Yes, Shelby.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, Shelby Township.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes, Shelby Township.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck. Planning Director's report?
One thing I'd like to bring to your attention, Mister Moffett, is a few days ago, I sent out a Michigan State University Extension flyer. It is a citizen planner program. We have Mister Snyder, who offered to take that first seat at this event. And I just wanted to urge you, if you have any interest, I'd be more than happy to cover anybody's costs as we don't have any conferences or meetings this year. We have available funds. If anybody's interested in attending one of these courses, I'd highly urge you to sign up. Also, you know, if there's any other information, or somebody's looking to educate themselves, we have the Michigan Association of Planning Commissioners. we have, um, the Michigan Association of Planning Commissioners Toolkit. If anybody's interested, give me a holler, we can order that. Um, also, there's the Michigan Township Association's Guide to Planning and Zoning as well, that, um, if anybody's interested in, in learning more about planning and zoning, or have any questions, um, please reach out to me, and, and I'd be either happy to order those kits for you, or sign you up for, for any classes, um, that, that are going on.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kirk?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, as part of that, I talked to Julie about that. I know we have some new members. We haven't been together in a long time. Um, when we can get back together, the thought is maybe get a little session together just for refresher and some whatever new changes there, you know, that have taken place. But also, any of the members, as always, you're always, well, please feel free to call me any questions before meetings. I know when we're together, sometimes they'll ask questions before meetings or after meetings, so anytime you have any questions about any items, please feel free to give me a call.
That's a, that's a, that's a good idea. Come back, back, uh, it's been a while since we've done this. We used to have study sessions, like on a, on, on, like on a Wednesday, that, you know, that we just would take the conference room and go through other topics, or things that, uh, in a little more depth, a little more, uh, informal, uh, setting, so. Hopefully soon, we'll get their shots and we can get back to, get back to normal. Okay, any other questions or comments from anyone? Anything from the floor? Hearing, seeing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Turner, support by Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, everyone be safe, take care, we'll see you in a few weeks, couple weeks.
Aye.
Night.
Night.
Good night.